The meeting is called to order. All right, the first thing we have to do is start with the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as the move.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's adopted. Next, we need a motion for approval of the minutes.
I make motion to approve the minutes of December 14th meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted. Next, Melissa will do a presentation which I believe was requested by the Board of Commissioners that we see a presentation of the old Roanoke Island Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at their January the 5th meeting during Commissioner Collins' comments, Commissioner Collins requested that you all review the old Roanoke Island Transportation Plan which you all have copies of. Of course, the cover is up on the screen. It is not very legible if I scroll through it. So we do have an extra copy over on the table. It's anyway. It's going to be really difficult to read, so I provided you all copies. So the request was just for you all to review this, and of course, it was included in the agenda packet. We can go through it, but there's something that I want to note towards the end and that, you know, I'll get kind of the feelings of the board here, but there are a number of -- so this committee that wrote and presented this plan were a number of individuals from the town, Dare County, Roanoke Island, Roanoke Voyages Corridor Commission, different entities that have an interest in transportation here on the island. There are a number of these projects towards the back of the plan that are not located in the town of Manio, and so maybe it's best that -- or I ask you all what you all think is best about whether or not we need to review those in particular. So we can start at the beginning, but before we really dig in, there are a lot of projects related to the airport and things that we have no jurisdiction over, so.
And for background, this was done in 2004. So many of -- there are some items that have been done. I noticed, for example, Grenville Street definitely has gone. And there are things, there's many things where things have been built, they look very different.
Yes.
Since it's been 18 years, it's a -- whatever you think is very pertinent for us.
Okay.
I can't imagine that they wanted us to go over every single page.
Well, and there might be -- There might be some things that are in the county that are worth noting. So we'll go ahead and just start at the beginning and kind of the introductory pages. And I've, since this was provided in the meeting packet, I don't think we need to go through it verbatim, but if there are points that I skip over that you all want to highlight, please stop me and we can go back. I can't get it to work. Do you want to try it? Okay. So the Roanoke Island Transportation Committee was established on May 12th, 2004. It consisted of members from the town of Manio, Fort Raleigh Historic Site, Dare County, Roanoke Island Commission, the Albemarle Commission, Dare County Airport, North Carolina Department of Transportation, and several local citizens. They collectively identified a need to develop a comprehensive transportation plan for the town of Manio in the north end of Roanoke Island. They believed that the plan should examine existing future influences on the transportation system over the next 20 years. And I believe at the time that this was written, the bridge, the new bridge onto the island at the Midway intersection had newly been completed. And it's also important to note that at the time that this transportation plan was conducted that there was a whole lot of other planning happening for the town. The 20-year plan was being, the update to the 20-year plan was being written. Of course, our new ordinances were adopted in 2005, so there was a big planning effort happening at this time. The goals and objectives were two tracks, a technical track and a stakeholder track. The goal of the project and study was to ensure these two tracks ran concurrently and collaborated with one another. The study area is Roanoke Island. And then there were a number of community meetings and stakeholder involvement. So the individuals that represented the committee from Dare County was Richard Johnson, Norma Mills, Ray Sturza, Donna Creef. The town of Manio was John Wilson, David Pharoah, Kermit Skinner, and Aaron Burke. Roanoke Island Commission was Suzanne Godley. Roanoke Voyages Corridor was Angel Corey. Fort Raleigh National Historic Site was Larry Belly. And the Dare County Airport Authority was George Spake from NC DOT. It was Jerry Jennings, who he oversaw the region, he's now retired, Chad Edge, Bishad Norwozy, Megan Blake from the Albemarle Commission, it was Brandon Schoeff, and from the Coastal Studies Institute, it was Nancy White and Ben Kahoon. So like I mentioned, there were a number of, there was a bulk of planning happening at the time. Our current land use plan, the 2007 land use plan had not yet been adopted, so they were working off of the 2000 land use plan. And there were some, there were some key issues noted. Stakeholders have identified several key issues that provided the guidance and direction of the study, which include preserve the character of Manio and Roanoke Island, provide alternate means to facilitate traffic flow, provide interconnectivity of local streets and roads, support local attractions such as the Lost Colony, North Carolina Aquarium, Roanoke Island Festival Park, Fort Raleigh, Elizabethan Gardens, the North Carolina Maritime Museum, and Old Town, and then to attract visitors and tourists. So the concerns were, that were noted, need to better manage traffic flow, enhance transportation network for more bicycle and pedestrian friendly environment. I'm not sure, I believe that the bicycle path, the multi-use path on the island existed at this time?
I think it did.
I think it did, I'm pretty sure it did. Overlap of tourist season and school, tourist season and school year, May to June and August and September, emergency vehicle access and freedom of movement during school hours, interconnectivity and access to schools, alternate access to the Dare County Regional Airport, parking spillover from North Carolina Aquarium to local streets, accident problems and speed at the Midway intersection, one-way versus two-way streets in Old Town. The reference to Old Town is Old Town, Manio, it's not specified here, but that's what that is. Lack of identity or gateway feature for the town of Manio. That's something that we also heard when we were reviewing the 20-year plan update was, the difference was noted between coming onto the island at the north end versus at the new bridge coming onto Midway. Utilities, removing overhead utilities and burying them underground, new development, residential, commercial, retail, and schools, changing land uses. The town of Manio requires street interconnectivity during development. Dare County has similar ordinance but selectively enforce it. Access control, special events, and local attraction access. So then it goes on to mention current initiatives, which are a number of the things that were included. It does say bikeway to the North Carolina Aquarium. Interconnectivity of the local and internal street networks, access management strategies through zoning redevelopment, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, connection alternatives, corridor streetscapes, alternatives, typical sections, Old Town waterfront one-way and two-way street networks, provide improvements to Midway intersection. Icon safety improvements, public transportation among local area attractions, revenue, I'm sorry, venues such as trolley service to local attractions and water taxi to local attractions, wayfinding signs and gateway treatments. Again, that's something that has been mentioned by various committees here with the town. County, I'm sorry.
What was that last term?
Wayfinding signs and gateway treatments.
Oh, wayfinding, yeah.
Yeah. County and land use planning, town land use planning, access strategies for Manio Middle School and College of the Albemarle, bikeway to the North Carolina Aquarium, preservation of village character through zoning ordinance and land use plan. So it talks about the attractions, and then it goes down to solutions and projects. And so this is kind of really the nuts and bolts of the plan. And it mentions, I'm sorry, this paper is huge. It mentions 17, more than that, but 17 various projects. And it does, for each project, list a description and pros and cons and recommendations. And again, 1A is not located in, what's that?
That's Airport Road.
Yeah, that's an Airport Road connection. It's not located in our planning jurisdiction.
1B isn't either.
Yep, that's right, 1B is not either. Neither is number two, but I will note that this plan, and this may go to, Madam Chair, your point, that some of these things are not where they say they are located. So the Coastal Studies Institute very clearly is not located near the airport. So that would be something that would require some updating. I think, of course, the EOC, I think, is on that parcel where they may have once talked about CSI going to. Number three is intersection safety improvements. This is called out and related to the Sunnyside intersection off of Airport Road, of course, which is not in the town's planning jurisdiction. Number four is airport expansion alignment. Again, not in our jurisdiction. Number five is alternative subdivision access. And these are for some subdivisions as you head towards the north end, Creef's Ridge, Meekins Road, and Rowley Wood. Basically, this plan called for connecting those to Driftwood Drive. I think the idea was to be able to create a loop there so that those roads did not only feed into the highway, but of course, those also are not in our planning jurisdiction. Number six is the northwest side connector, which would connect Jockler Lane with Driftwood Drive through Dare County Public Works Facility. Not in our planning jurisdiction. Number seven.
No.
Ta-da. Number seven is US Highway 64 operational improvements. The description is to implement transportation management improvements along US Highway 64 corridor, including signal timing and phasing, lane designations, signing and special event traffic management strategies, implement access management policies to limit vehicle conflicts and sustain flow of traffic through the corridor, interconnect and coordinate traffic signals along the corridor to maintain traffic progression. The pros are improvements provide short-term, low-cost solution, that's the traffic signal management, I think, low-cost solutions that can realize instant benefits. I don't know that they.
That's, do you know if any of that's been done?
I don't. So we could ask DOT.
Well, it's, some of the, if we're going to address these, if we're going to attempt to approach this again, it would seem that the county would have to have the investment that we have because over half of this is county involved. Just going ahead.
And also, how much state do we have on 64? Because that's.
It's DOT.
Basically state DOT.
I mean, if we wanted to close up some of the cut ramps that are there, that we probably couldn't do that.
It would be, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it would be nice to know what sort of a direction or an idea they have for us as we examine this. What are the thoughts of the board? Where do they want us to go besides just peruse this, or are there further thoughts on it?
Okay.
How do you all feel about that?
Yeah.
I mean, just having to review it, what do they want us to do with it?
That was not clear.
Which is fine. Maybe there was an intent that wasn't expressed, that often happens. Someone had an idea or an intent that just wasn't perfectly expressed to us.
So if we want to just keep kind of plowing through this, for Highway 64 operational improvements, we can find out if the signals are timed. That would be an easy question of DOT. Of course, I've made a note that the roundabouts aren't, that were never constructed, and I think they were controversial.
Yeah, I don't know if they would help traffic. I think they'd be more of a hindrance. Those people who aren't familiar with can get really confused when you put a roundabout.
And I think too, when I look at the first one at Bowser Town and Grenville Street, those, maybe that was part of why they suggested one there. Because those streets aren't, there is, but those streets aren't aligned. When you, when you go across from Bowser Town. Maybe that's why that was a suggestion there. So I'll keep going. Number eight is the North Carolina Department of Transportation State Yard Connector. This is in town, and you will see that the idea was to have two streets, one from the highway to Haven Creek Lane that goes directly through DOT's maintenance yard.
Parking lot.
Two, well, all the parking lot's more right over the buildings.
And I misspoke before the meeting, but it doesn't use an existing curb cut there where there are already three in a row.
It's a new curb cut, the 2As are not being utilized.
Yeah. But the description is the Havens Creek Road Connection will consist of a new two-lane roadway providing access to Highway 64. The proposed roadway will have a posted speed limit of between 25 and 35 mile an hour. The new road will create a new T intersections at each terminus. The new road alignment is expected to traverse between an existing structure and Ace Hardware Store Storage Building as well as through the NC DOT Maintenance Yard. The extension of Simon Street from its existing terminus within NC DOT Maintenance Yard northbound to Ananias Dare Street includes connection of a new two-lane roadway with a posted speed limit of 25 mile an hour. Simon Street Extension will tie into Ananias Dare Street to the north creating a T intersection. This project assumes the NC DOT Maintenance Yard will or can be relocated. And the pros are stated as the extension provides logistical, a street connection between two residential neighborhoods, proposed alignments create a full movement intersection at Simon Street and Sir Walter Raleigh Street, and the intersections of the two extensions between the State Yard and Highway 64. The public right-of-way already exists. And then the cons are the creation of the T intersection along US Highway 64 simply adds another point of access to the corridor, to our point earlier. Uncertainty surrounds the relocation of the NC DOT Maintenance Yard. And recommendations are to refine the alignment to minimize property impacts and safety issues with closely spaced intersections. Coordinate with NC DOT to identify and facilitate the relocation of the Maintenance Yard. This project requires further review, analysis, and consideration to determine its true viability. And to the point of the recommendation here, that to me is a little bit confusing because it says that DOT is part of the committee.
And they weren't listed when you read.
No, they are listed as their committee, so.
I wonder what the reasoning was behind doing that because if you drive around that area, it's not like there's a lot of traffic or.
That's where, right near where I live, and there is a little too much traffic right now in Ananias Dare. It's sort of used as a bypass to Burnside, and it's, we have speeding issues there where the road that is connecting to that doesn't seem to have, there isn't a lot of traffic back there. It would feed more traffic out onto Ananias Dare, which already has.
Yeah, that's, you know, this is just going to add traffic.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And also create more potential backups on 64 where it doesn't seem to.
And that's also, it's 2004, so this is significant changes in the traffic flow since then. 2004, right, not 2014.
Going through the State Yard, it's more or less a dead end. There's no traffic. The other two streets that were Ananias Dare and Sir Walter Raleigh connected.
Right.
But that one going through the State Yard is going to come to a dead end. There's no traffic across from it. You've got traffic lights on both two streets.
Right.
I mean, what's the reason for that?
I'm not sure what the logic.
If you're putting a street in, it doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, perhaps nine.
Yeah, number nine, we did it. Upper Walk Avenue Extension, so about the time that this plan was being written was also the time that the Marshes Light Development applications were coming to the town, and so when Marshes Light was being developed, the owners of that property offered 18 feet of property, and then the county offered 18 feet of property to make the 36-foot wide right-of-way that is now known as the Upper Walk Avenue Extension. So this street gets used quite a bit. It's a lot of times how I come into town and get downtown. I think that it has been pretty successful, and this is one feather in our cap.
Agreed.
Number 10 is the Agona Street Connector. The extension of existing Agona Street westbound involves the construction of a new two-lane roadway segment with a posted speed limit of 25 mile an hour and the creation of a new T intersection with Biddeford Street. The proposed extension provides a logical connection point between Biddeford and the west to Highway 64 in the east. A roundabout is also proposed at the intersection of Biddeford and Sir Walter Raleigh, which is another, we did it. So there is currently today the roundabout that we have in town. Yep, that is the home of our Richard Etheridge statue. So the pros are the extension further promotes residential street interconnectivity and accessibility among neighborhoods. There are limited property acquisitions and property owner impacts, the connection fills a void in the local residential street network. The cons are that at least one property will be, and one property owner will be impacted by the proposed roadway extension, and the recommendation was the proposed alignment of the extension should follow existing property lines to the extent possible in order to maintain integrity of impacted parcels. Seek to implement the proposed extension with planned Biddeford Street improvements and a roundabout at the Sir Walter Raleigh's Biddeford Street intersection. So I did a little bit of research here. One, of course, as noted, we have a roundabout at Sir Walter Raleigh and Biddeford, but the proposed street that brings Agona Street all the way to Biddeford, they've aligned it with property lines that exist, but where you see the circle with the A in it. And that property now has, in 2014, a home was built on that property. So I'm not sure how close it would, I don't know where that house is sited because we don't see that on this GIS profile, but that is one thing. And then the other is the, the proposed street that runs between Agona and Sir Walter Raleigh Street follows what I believe is a very significant drainage ditch. You all may recall that right now we are in the engineering phase of a west-side stormwater project that that ditch is the center of. And so I think we've got a lot of stormwater issues in the area that would need to be ironed out prior to building a street there. Those are just the notes that I have.
That street would involve filling the ditch in, which would not be good for that neighborhood.
Number 11 is another one that is outside of the town's jurisdiction, but it's, it is very close to town limits because we did, where you see the circle in the 11, the property that is there, the town last year annexed, and it is town-owned property. But there's a really nice house where the circle with the A is, that this road proposes to drive straight through. And I believe there's some new construction on the Burnside side that is happening currently in one of those parcels maybe. Let's see, okay. Number 12 is the connection between Sir Walter Raleigh and Vickers Lane Extension. The description is the proposed roadway connection consists of a new two-lane facility between Sir Walter Raleigh and Vickers Lane with an anticipated posted speed limit of 25 to 35 mile an hour. The town of Manio's engineer is currently developing the specific alignment for this roadway. That's interesting. The connection will begin at the proposed roundabout at the intersection of. The connection will begin at the proposed roundabout at the intersection of California Lane and the Vickers Lane Extension Project Seven.
Where's that?
I don't know.
The roundabout?
I don't, oh, so there were, no, I don't even see it on this map.
Vickers Lane is, what's that?
What about the yellow X down?
Vickers Lane is.
Bottom right corner, there's a yellow circle.
Oh, so that's it. So Vickers Lane Extension includes Fannin Mill Road.
Listen.
And actually, that's on the next one.
I believe this got, I believe this is Arvila now.
It just, yeah. Don't touch the screen, or you can.
Arvila and one side, Lindsey. Yeah. And then it ends up, or cul-de-sacs, they go maybe seventy straight to make up for this, but it'll be on the map.
I think part of the intent of this originally was to have that whole back road, so you could go through Manio, down the highway or down the back road.
You can go, I mean, indirectly, you can drive. I do that often when I want to avoid sixty-four, I go around the back and I go down Bowser Town and take a right through Dave's Neighborhood, and it's really, it's really a lot easier. It is through the circle.
More and more people are using California.
Yeah, California is actually, if you want to beat the traffic, it's really not bad. And you don't, and you want to stay twenty-five miles per hour, which is fine.
And I'm looking at the Google Earth, the safe thing on the other end, it does, it's not a cul-de-sac, it ran cul-de-sac.
Thirteen.
So you could cut through. The problem you run into though is people live on a dead-end street, you know, with quietly related kids and stuff. Nobody wants their street opened up.
And that's a lot, this proposed to do that in a lot of cases. They really, they really didn't want a lot of cul-de-sacs. They wanted to open the flow of traffic, and in most times homeowners don't really care for that. You don't, if you have kids and stuff, you don't want to open your street. You want to have a safe neighborhood.
Well, we built there on Lindsey. At the time, the dump area was supposed to be a green park, and it is teed so that the road could extend into, and of course, that never happened.
And if and when they added on to that development on the other side, it'd be nice to go around the block instead of having a dead end come back up.
I'd be curious, and I'll, I'll make a note to see if I can find out in research, is if the county's land use plan includes any kind of activities for the old dump site.
What I was told was that the dump is so polluted that it would cost too much to do anything there.
See what their plans say.
Yeah. I thought that's where the government.
Really?
I lay back down, visit that.
Number thirteen, this one is interesting from a town perspective, even though some of it is not in town limits. Number thirteen is Vista Lake Drive and Bowser Town Road Connection. The construction of a new two-lane roadway with a posted speed limit of twenty-five mile an hour will provide connection from Vista Lake Drive to Bowser Town Road. The project will begin in the south at a terminus with Vista Lake Drive and continue north along designated easements right-of-way into a proposed residential street network being constructed as part of a new residential development. I, I think they're referring to the flats, which is behind the ABC Store and the Carpet Store. From the new residential development, the proposed connection will then continue northbound along the proposed alignment and will avoid disturbing a residential apartment complex. Oh, that must be Croatan.
Yeah.
By tying into abandoned water treatment facility service road. And then the pros are this connection enables local Vista Lake Drive residents as an alternative route to access US Highway sixty-four. The alignment also offers the opportunities for a connection to Vickers Lane. There are no concerns regarding extensive roadway construction. Through efforts of the town, significant section of the roadways, of the roadway will be constructed as part of a recently approved residential development. Easements have already been identified and dedicated as part of the development to accommodate the proposed connections. Cons, impacts are expected to homeowners and property owners in the immediate vicinity of Vista Lake Residential Neighborhood. The proposed intersection of the new roadway with Vista Lake Drive is located within a short distance of the existing Vista Lake Drive Neighborhood Intersection. Town will be responsible for acquiring remainder of necessary right-of-way segments located to the south of Vickers Lane Stub Street. Recommendations: Consult Vista Lake Drive residents on the value of alternative access points to residential community. Conduct analysis of proposed roadway alignment between Vickers Lane Vista Lake Drive. This analysis will help determine safe and appropriate location of new roadway intersections with Vista Lake Drive. So the first point I'd like to make is, there is a old roadway that's not nearly half as long as what they show here, on town-owned property where the wastewater treatment facility I think putting a road through there might be problematic, as the town may need that property for expansion at some point.
So how, yes, how wide is it, do you read, what's the right-of-way?
Well, like Uppelock Extended, the newest one we have is thirty-six feet wide.
Well, so much is the right-of-way, is another five, six feet or ten feet or something?
Well, the total was thirty-six feet.
Thirty-six feet.
And then the road is maybe thirty feet wide.
I see where you could follow that, that line down there from, from the flats to, what's it called, Vista Lake Drive. Just need to take thirty-six feet and field's property there.
That wouldn't be.
Wants to break it.
And a shed.
Wouldn't be, the, the main problem there is that the people that live back in Vista Lake, it's very difficult for them to even get on.
Backyard would be a road fraud.
You cannot make a left-hand turn there, period. You've got to go right and then do a U-turn somewhere, swing across the street. So you'd have to have a traffic light there. I mean, there's, I see them all the time, can't get out. I know, and I'm sitting there trying to get out, and then when they go, I've got to wait for them to go by, and they bolt out to the middle lane, and it's, and all our guests and summer is just.
So it would actually be really helpful.
Jumping a bunch of traffic to a dead end, so to speak, because there's no way for them to get on sixty-four. Not unless they're heading towards the beach. They can make a right turn and cut them out in front of somebody, but you can't go left. There's so many people loading that turn lane up, heading for the gas station next door, and the opposite way coming to go to Darrell's and to go to McDonald's and to Jamie's Place, it just backs all up in there. I mean, it's a good idea to bypass that, but to get back on there would be difficult.
Well, it would feed everything to Bowser Town to the light. So wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't that be easier than, they would feed all the traffic, because I see people, and in the morning, I see people all the time there. Wouldn't it push all the traffic to where we do have a light for them to, to cross?
To get in, get in there to go to a light?
Do you mean, you think they don't get backed up there? Is that what you're saying?
It'll just be more traffic trying to bypass that congested area, and then they can't get back on the road. Because with Vista Lake, just those residents there, you'll see four or five cars backed up. If you put that extra flow on it, you're gonna have fifteen, twenty cars at any given time trying to get out on that highway. And the first one that's making a left, everybody will get irate because they can't make a left in five minutes.
And I, my vision was that you would go, use that road instead of trying to take a left. You would go down that road and go to the light, and that's how you'd get out. You'd go to the light at the coffee shop.
I think you'd have more traffic trying to.
That's interesting, okay.
Think he's talking about going the other way.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I was thinking in one direction, yes. But you can still take a right or a left at the light, it doesn't matter.
If you're, if you're coming into town, you're trying to get up that way, it'd be But getting out of town would be annoying there. Be that much grass that I'll have to mow, Jamie? Few less whiskey than.
Same thing with Cypress Cove, Back Bay Road is, is square.
Not to mention it floods there all the time, because of standing water all the time.
That is a really good issue, because it does flood back there, so if you paved all that, you had to put in a lot of stormwater improvements to get that water out.
To project a stormwater.
Yeah, and we already got standing water back there, so. Almost worth it, I put a road in just to get the stormwater runoff.
Number fourteen?
I'm sorry, what's that?
I said number fourteen?
Number fourteen.
This is Vickers Lane Extension to California Lane. I'm not sure that, okay. So the existing Vickers Lane Stub Street should be extended to California Lane Extension via Fannin Mill Road should this parcel request annexation into the town. The pros are that the roadway extension would provide alternate access route for residential commuters to Highway sixty-four. The connection would offer opportunity for reduction in traffic along Highway sixty-four corridor and more interconnectivity among residential communities. Cons are acquisition of the right-of-way is required to support necessary construction of proposed road. Recommendations: Any approved site plan should incorporate the desired and entered connectivity of streets. It is recommended that the developers secure and dedicate the necessary right-of-way. If property owners or developers request annexation with roadway improvements necessary to create, this connection should be required. So one consideration here is that this would feed through the flats subdivision currently, that currently exists, and closer to where C is on this map is, they are developing a campground? Which I, I don't know that the roadway in the flats would be wide enough for that kind of traffic. Those are private streets in the flats.
The flats are private streets?
So you would have to get permission from the flats before, since they are private, you'd have to, or the?
And those streets will first would need to be constructed to DOT standards, and then they could dedicate the streets to the town. And then pursue this connection that is not in our planning jurisdiction. So I think that's why they talk about annexation here, because on two sides of it, this prop- this property is adjacent to properties that are in town limits, but the other two sides Number fifteen is interesting. This is Midway Access Realignment, and we hear a lot about this intersection, so the description is this project provides an improved grid system of local street connections northeast of the Midway intersection. This involves a new two-lane street connection between US Highway sixty-four East and Russell Twyford Road, and a new two-lane connection between Russell Twyford Road and Berry Road with a posted speed limit of twenty-five mile an hour. At US Highway sixty-four East West, the connection would be right in, right out only. A new sign, a si-, a new signalized intersection would be created where the new roadway ties into the existing under-signalized Marshall College US Highway intersection. This intersection will benefit ingress egress associated with the Dare County governmental center.
Signalized, so they're proposing to put a signal.
Is that what that is? Oh, signalized.
Signalized, they're proposing to put a.
Right, that close to Midway?
Of the Causeway?
Mm-hmm. What's that?
Not the Cause.
Let's see, let me look.
On sixty-four coming into town, I think.
Oh, well, that's there.
I see it was at Marshall Collins, right where the circle is.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. I was looking at the red plus. Hmm, that's interesting.
I might be just getting it confused, but I swear this went with that other plan for, that song is now developing, it was originally Bob DeGabo Plan twenty-some years ago.
Well, that's certainly, I mean, that's why this, this comes up to you all, and why these issues you are familiar with, is because.
That light at Marshall Collins that they show there, you're gonna have people barreling down the Causeway, coming around, making that right turn, and the traffic has stopped and backed up. Like they're just gonna plow right into the rear end of somebody. That was not well planned at all.
They stop coming into town anywhere. There's a sign there that says you or anything, and they just stop.
And I'll note that the road that goes from Russell Twyford around the new road, not the one that can, that goes down Berry, what is, but, you know, on Friday morning we had flooding. It came up and it went down, but this is one of the spots that after, we see flooding at Fernando Street downtown and Queen Elizabeth Avenue, when you come into town and there is flooding, that property where the light would be to the east is always underwater.
Yeah.
It is, it's.
And the, the other downside.
Near the pest control building, yeah.
It's already difficult, if you're coming out Russell Twyford, you gotta really be careful of whether you're making a right of line and traffic on sixty-four, two sixty-four. And if you put that little thing in there like that to put extra traffic on Russell Twyford, making that intersection even worse than it already is.
The recommendations are to designate and acquire necessary property through developments planned for northeast quadrant. Promote safety and traffic operation benefits to local residents and business owners. Adequately sign access drivew- driveways to limit driver confusion and to promote And that would be making the assumption, I think this is more, well, certainly parcels along Russell Twyford Road have been annexed into town limits, but the Berry Road and the properties at the light are not in our planning jurisdiction.
You know, there's, a lot of this shows up as wooded out here, but there's a lot of houses trapped in here now.
Yeah, the peninsula's back there.
When you get down Berry, the peninsula lots of shows.
Oh, yeah.
That when you get down Berry, much greater than it needs. Those people would not be happy.
And to that point, number sixteen A, Dare County Government Center Connector Alternative A, looks like it, it brings the roadway from the highway near the bridge along the backside property lines of the.
Government Center.
Government Center, and then into Cypress Cove.
Looks like it comes from the visitor's bureau.
They got that thing starting where people are coming sixty miles an hour off it, it could be a better route. And they gotta cut right across the westbound lanes.
They did align it with the driveway of the visitors bureau.
That was nice.
That's not gonna help.
And I can't, it says intersection improvement, but does it say anything about putting a stop, is that a stoplight?
No, that's just the.
And potentially a traffic signal. And number sixteen B is a connector alternative B, which is similar, but.
It has the thing negative issue that's got more interior roads.
And it doesn't show the, it doesn't show the layout of Cypress Cove.
Right, but it goes right through there.
Yep, but it goes right through it. Seventeen A and seventeen B are Midway Intersection Improvement. These, I think garnered a lot of public attention. I know this is one location where there was a proposed roundabout at some point. And you, and really seventeen A, B, C, and D, if you flip the page.
Yeah, it's all related.
I guess they were all considered together. But since we're talking about Midway, I will note that in previous plan reviews that we have had, including the Plan Update Working Group, one thing that was mentioned that we have done is that folks have been concerned that traffic approaching from either bridge towards Midway Intersection, that there needed to be some signage offered for Manio. And in twenty twenty-one, we received encroachment agreements from DOT and put signage up and worked diligently about where those signs went so that they were far enough away from a turning lane for a driver to anticipate the turn. So there are some Discover Manio signs. There's one just after the Visitors Bureau driveway that says Discover Manio with an arrow pointing left. And then if you're coming from Pirate's Cove, there is one where the property that Saga owns that has the proposed Salt Meadow Landing on, there's one there in the DOT right-of-way that says Discover Manio with a right turn arrow. So we have, we continue to take suggestions of folks.
And those signs are really attractive. They're very like, they don't look like a highway sign. They're really nice.
Like metal painted.
Yeah, they're very attractive signs.
So I don't know if you all have any comments about Midway Intersection or not.
It's unfixable, just as.
Yeah.
That's, I was, yeah.
Well, I'm sure there's gonna be a study in the near future, transportation study on that in the near future. Saga comes back with plans.
They didn't know what to do when they finished the bridge. They had a big concrete island in the middle when they first finished. That really messed up traffic, and they ended up coming in about six months later and jacking away with that thing out, and doing it, doing it the way it is now.
So the plan goes on to list some management strategies, and we mentioned curb cuts, limiting curb cuts and vehicular traffic points. It notes parking in downtown, which we know that that has improved with the construction of the Town Common. We continue to work on bicycle and pedestrian needs. Actually, the, we annually apply for a grant from the APRO, which is our transportation planning organization, for bicycle maps, which have been wildly popular. And we continue to do those things. Of course, we don't, it mentions public transportation. The county has their, their transportation system that I think has been impacted during COVID. But with that.
Is that what you mean, the vans?
The vans that you call, yeah.
These still be around. I see them pretty frequently.
So the last page that I will note, I know that the town adopted this plan. The county did not. So it, so my point would be that maybe that's why we see that some of these projects that are in unincorporated Dare County did not, were not seen through is because maybe perhaps there wasn't buy-in from Dare County, where we saw some activity on the projects that were located inside the Town of Manio Town Limits. Of course, the Coastal Studies Institute wouldn't really be impacted at this point because they aren't located where this plan envisions them to be. The Corridor Commission no longer, or of the Corridor Committee of the Roanoke Island Commission no longer exists. We enforce those rules as the town. And of course, the Dare County Airport Authority would probably follow suit with the county. So, Madam Chair, that is my review. If you all have thoughts or suggestions or recommendations, or if you want further guidance from the Board of Commissioners, we can get that.
Thoughts?
Since you're not busy, if you wanted to work on it, and you don't, but just go ahead and start deleting the things that are not, no longer possible, you know, that they put a house on your road that's just not feasible, take that house and open up a curb cut, you know.
Other comments?
We have with, with almost every proposal that's been before us, anything large, we have talked about traffic. However, I think if the county, it would be good, and I don't know how you all feel about this, to have the county participate. Would it be possible to see if the county is interested in being a partner with us in improving transportation on Roanoke Island? And of course, we'd have to, we'd have to check with how the citizens feel, because it's been a mighty long time since this has been produced. You know, you were part of government then, and so you have to, you have to have citizen buy-in. And then we have to see if the county will work with us for the whole, for all of Roanoke Island.
They weren't interested last time, so.
Things change, you know, you never know. Somebody worked pretty hard on this.
Yeah, they did.
Trouble is, most of the people that were involved on the county side are gone.
Yeah. Well, I know. The Commissioner.
Richard Johnson passed away, Nora Mills moved back to Raleigh, Ray Sturz retired, and Doc Priest has retired in the town. So that's everybody from the county that's involved.
Correct. All right. Any other thoughts?
No, nothing else.
Now, it's time for public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Planning Board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address the, all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded. Do we have anyone who would like to comment?
Yes, Catherine Bachan.
May I? Oh, you can go right up there. Thank you.
Catherine Bachan lived four oh five Fernando Street, and I'm always interested in what's going on with the counties and the Commissioners' meetings and things like that. And I like to go online and look at the agendas and the calendar, and I'd like to see the park meetings put on the calendar. I think those are supposed to be open to the public, not for any kind of public intervention, but to see what's going on. And so I'd like to see park meetings on the calendar with the agendas, the upcoming agendas.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
My name is Tim Teepel. I'm actually speaking for a group, so if I could have my full five minutes. Welcome, or thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm glad to be here. I was really excited whenever I got to see that our transportation plan was actually gonna be looked at today. I know I was in the meeting of Commissioners whenever Mr. Collins, our Commissioner Collins, did address it, and he did leave it pretty vague. However, I think it is, like you have stated, a lot of people have worked very hard on this. And not only has some Commissioners through the North Carolina or through Dare County no longer with us, but I'd also like to mention that a bunch of the Town of Manio members are not with us as well, as well as David Faro. So their intent, as much as I have been privileged to know, was to actually allow a line in and a line out, which on the north end, it has worked out. If the traffic is backed up because of school district or the school, you can easily go down the back roads, and it will get you all the way to where the roundabout at Ace is. Then you go to where the Health Department is. Now, due to the construction of the Health Department, that road is kinda tough to get through. And it's also been spoken at one of the Commissioners' meetings to see about widening it or to see about no parking there. Then we go all the way to California. And yes, originally, I believe, and what I have been told, is they would like to get a road all the way to where the Dare County Commissioners are, or where the Dare County Government Office is. And the light that you have been talked about was actually, what I have perceived, is a left-hand turning lane into that, so in that way, it would turn left. As you go northbound, it would give you a chance to go northbound through the back way of the streets, lightening up the traffic flow on the main highway. So it would be, as soon as you turn on, you already have a bunch of people turning left already into the Dare County community buildings as well. So in that way, it would be a light, it would not be imposing as you're getting off the highway. It has had some problems, and it has had not, well, problems is not the correct word. It has ran into some issues because Dare County has not participated as much as what Manio is. But I do believe that it would create less of a traffic flow problem. Working at Shallow Bay Bay as an assistant dock master, I have to turn in and out of there every single day. And you're right, whenever people are getting out of school and whenever people are getting off work, you cannot turn left. It's hard to even turn right. And if you had a back way to bypass, just like at the north end, it would give you that constant traffic flow that you'd be allowed to make different opinion, or different directions as you could go. As it comes off, you would be able to come up to the light, and you might be able to make a left, because other direction is going either on that back strip if it's residential, or, you know, you would have, not have a problem making the right either. I know it's kinda hard discussing all this with five minutes, and you guys did a wonderful job looking at the plan. I think it's something to look into, because it is a problem around the Shallow Bay Bay area, and as soon as where you hit the coffee shop, a front porch, all the way to Dare County's government building, it is backed up. And if we could have a secondary street that actually went all the way back. Now, you are right also about the CBS spot, because it is hard to make a left there. One of the things that I have privilege to hear about, that one of the reasons why they had the drawings as they did, is that you could actually go out on the highway, it's backed up enough, where then you could make, cross that other lane, and then make a U-turn to make the other way. So altogether, you were bypassing that CBS spot of that hard-turned direction. Also, I just got my thirty seconds, I would also like to mention that we do have crosswalks in Manio. If there's any chance that we could get a signal, because I am the, I am one of the few that actually stop at that crosswalk that is in Manio. And if we could start paying attention to our pedestrian traffic, it would probably be great. Thank you very much, guys. I do appreciate it.
Which crosswalk is that, at the school?
There's one right in front of our right, where COA is, there's one located right on the highway. It's really faded of a crosswalk right there. There's also one located over by where TL's is, and I think that's either, I'm not sure if that's in Manio or in Dare County. But there is one also there. There's actually two in Manio. So, and it is very faded, and I do see a lot of people try to just stop there. So, thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for listening to me. Have a great night.
Okay, we are moving on to new business. Melissa, would you like to introduce us to the zoning permit application?
Sure. So I am in receipt of a zoning permit application for a change of use at one ten South US Highway sixty-four. This is the old Verizon store, located on the same parcel where Piggly Wiggly is, El Shadai and the washhouse. And so the proposed use is for Jersey Mike's Subs and the, and the portion of that building that was Verizon Wireless. Provided in the application, you will see the layouts, the proposed layouts of the restaurant, and Mr. Hayman is here, if you all have any questions for him.
Just, it's already allowed use, correct? And it's already a restaurant in that building?
I'm sorry?
It is. It is.
So it's just a simple approval, isn't it?
Under B two, it says conditional use is restaurants fall under the conditional use under the B two zoning.
So it is an allowed use, yes, sir.
With pretty standard, it's allowed.
There's no, there's no site flat approval, though, just a.
That nothing is changing on the site.
Just a change of use. Then I'll go ahead, if Fairwood's comfortable, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved.
I like the easy ones.
I'm really happy to see a restaurant go in there.
Yeah. Well, there's one more than COA opening.
Welcome to Manio. And now, Jamie will take us to appointing members to the Park Committee.
Yes, Madam Chair. Okay, so what we have tonight are four people who are interested in being Park members. We have three available positions for Park. So Mr. Bob Keeney is asking for reappointment, Ms. Jackie Myers is asking for reappointment, Ms. Amy Bennett is asking for reappointment, and Mr. Jay Morris is asking to be newly appointed. So you guys can make a motion and say, I make a motion to appoint blah, blah, blah to the Park Committee, or you guys can give nominations, or however you wanna do it. So I'll leave it at your discretion, and you have your forms. And if you need any more information, I can give that to you as well.
So Jamie, you have three incumbents and one?
Yep.
Is Jay Mor, is that Jay Morris, the builder?
Correct, yes.
May I ask a question?
May I ask a question? It's more the attendance because I was appointed as the chair, and at the top, it was highlighted, should any member of an appointed board, commission, or committee fail to attend two consecutive meetings, whether or not such failure is excused, his or her appointment shall be automatically terminated. My question is, is there someone who it would sort of remove their nomination because of that sort of thing?
Amy Bennett, I don't have the facts, but she was, she was removed a second time because of attendance.
So she was removed March tenth of 2020, and then she was removed in July fourteenth of 2020, but Chair Wickstrom at the time said that that was, that's something that happened, so it was beyond her control. So you guys put her back on. Do you remember?
I remember it was a family emergency or something, we replaced her back.
Yes, so you put her back on, and then she missed the, the September and October meetings of 2021, so that put her off again.
Well, with that noted, if I may, I'm gonna move to nominate Bob Keeney, Jackie Myers, and Jay Morris.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
The motion carries. It's time for Board Member.
I, I think though, Jamie, don't they need to designate a liaison to Park? Or
It could either be the Chair of the Planning Board or doesn't need, so you guys can choose these, to be
I'm gonna let the Board choose.
I'd pick you.
I second, I second that.
Do you need to add another
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let me find out what day that is so I can take off work.
We'll work through that, Madam Chair.
Because I believe that is a day meeting, correct?
Correct.
It is.
Give me the date. All right, now it's time for Board Member comments. Jamie, I'll start with you.
I have nothing. Good work, good work.
I will go with no comments tonight.
Did you get a chance to look into putting up signs directing people to the Town Common Parking? You know, I brought that up last month, that there's really no signs designating that there's a parking lot there.
We, we've reviewed, from a Google perspective, the, the parking notifications from Google. And then the, there is funding for wayfinding in the town's budget, but we have not started that yet, but that will incorporate that. In the meantime, we could get some of the small signs that
The circle with the
Mm-hmm, we can do that.
Okay. And the other issue I want to bring up is, we're, we're getting a bad rap from Dare County about, you know, not participating with them on the housing project on Bowser Town. And I, I feel it's kind of unjustified because first of all, one of the big issues is sewage treatment. They're looking to just jump on our sewage treatment plant, and, you know, the people in the town, the taxpayers, and the property owners have paid for that treatment plant and paid for the upkeep of it. And, you know, they just want to dive in and try and solve the problem and dump everything on us. And, you know, the articles in the paper just made it seem like we were the bad guys turning it down. And I don't think the people in, in town really wanted the project either.
Can I follow up on that? I agree with you in so many ways, and Jamie made a good comment last time. He said, we really want affordable housing. However, it's not anywhere near the zoning density for our town. And it's very odd to me that the, we are the Planning Board, and we have never, no one brought anything to us. That was very strange to me, that they went, it was before the Commissioners, it's highly irregular. So there were kind of a lot of things about it. The project isn't what I believe, and I think most of you believe, most of the citizens of Manio would want. It's just way too high density, doesn't fit in with the Manio way of building in any way, shape, or form. And there was no discussion with us. We didn't have a chance to say that because there was no, no discussion with us. It was never before us.
Yeah, if I could follow up on that, the last couple of projects we've looked at, I mean, everybody's coming in and saying, well, in order for me to make this thing fly, you guys need to double or triple your density. And it, it's like, hey, if you're gonna bring something to us, here's the zoning ordinance, comply with that, and we'll work with you. But, you know, to just come in here and say, turn everything upside down and let us go ahead and build something.
I think Jamie said something, if I'm not mistaken, and that is, the builder buys the property, and he knows what the zoning is and what's allowed and what's not allowed. And then he comes to us and wants us to change our zoning or our barriers, and then we look like the bad guys when we turn them down. So, you know, there has to be something that they should
Yes.
That's it.
And it's the will of the Commissioners as well. It's not just the Planning Board.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's the will of the Commissioners that the zoning stays as it is.
The last, the last three affordable housing, we're submitted plans with the changes needed to make to the ordinance to make them allowable. And then this one was even coming into the town, it was just gonna hook onto our sewer system but be a county property. It was, so it wasn't gonna be any, it didn't have to meet town
Right.
Regulations, ordinance code, setback.
Sewer system.
Density, they just wanted to tie into the sewer system.
And if, if, if we're gonna have people hook up to our sewer system, then it should be people that are in Manio, that should have first priority, where we get the tax base and everything else from them. That's what I think.
Yeah, exactly. That's who pays, pay to build the treatment plant, that's who
Yeah.
operate it.
I don't know, we got, what, six hundred and fifty thousand gallons, and after that we gotta make improvements to
Upgrades the plan.
Well, you gotta go ask the state if you can add to it.
Six hundred.
Six hundred? Six hundred thousand gallons when you reach that limit. Of course, you have to ask the state if you can add on or
Very good comments, Board. Anymore? All right. Then I would like someone to make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
All right.